We're gonna call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Westegard.
Yep.
Woltman.
I'm here.
Muller.
Yes.
Reese.
Here.
We have public forum now. Anybody can speak if they'd like to, but I'd like to remind everybody that the general public can weigh in on any agenda item. You just have to raise your hand and be involved in the conversation. Just don't stand up and yell. Is everybody clear with that? Consent agenda. Any additions, corrections?
Nope.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Huss.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, our final pay estimate for Sunset Drive.
Yeah, I just wanna do, discuss this a little bit. As Lon and I were talking about this more today, just know that, that the little drainage swale there between McCormick's and the neighbor house is, it was never, if it was done, it wasn't done to satisfaction. Lon's still a little concerned about a, a little bit of a crown in there as far as drainage not, not being a swell. And there's just not very many rock down there at the riprap, riprap rock at the outlet. So, talked to their engineer about that today, and he said, "Yeah, you still probably need to release most of the retainage." He said he would suggest we'd hold back $2,500 and, and release the rest. But the, this $2,500 to be held until this other work's done.
Lon, was that $2,500 covered if we had to do something else?
Oh, if we do it ourselves, yeah.
Okay, I mean, is that enough to hold back?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought we had that last payment paid.
Well, we've, we've paid the last payment. Other than this, retainage is 5% of the project. You know, and we hold that for an extra month afterwards.
I see.
Just kinda for these reasons, and make sure that everything's attended to.
Mm-hmm.
And all the bills are paid, and we haven't heard any concerns about the bills being paid, so.
Okay.
So we need, we need a motion to pay the bill minus $2,500?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Huss.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Okay, hopefully we have a new city attorney.
The, the agreement is, is in the packet, and we would just recommend approval of the agreement.
Do we have that motion? So move. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Huss.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Janet, thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you.
So do we. Okay, we have a resignation of building inspector.
Yeah, Daryl has, has resigned his, his position as, Daryl H. had resigned his position as building inspector, and then also would resign from the planning and zoning commission as will be effective on January 15th, and the council should probably take action on the resignation.
Need a motion to accept those two resignations?
I'll get it.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Huss.
No. Not the next day, Deppers.
Is everybody gonna replace him? Okay. Do we have anybody in office?
Put some ads out.
Well, we're gonna talk about this now. Um, I wanna kinda go through that, what, what our building inspector has done. I just wanna go through the building inspection process then. It's on page two in the, in the council memo. Kinda walk through that, um, make sure that everybody's aware of the process, see if anything comes to mind about any potential improvements to the process, or, or how you might see anything changing. Um, so just the process about getting a building permit. So the applicant gets a, the building permit application from City Hall, and we give them this packet that has the application on it, has the, the zoning regulations for the district, so like if it's an R2 district, they get the R2 regulations, and there's also some general regulations that apply to all of the districts. And that's all included in this packet. And then there's also this checklist that's included in there too. And that was in the packet, and I just wanna go through this with you because it kind of details what it is that we check for. Because, again, remembering that, you know, we're checking for zoning compliance, we don't have a building code. So, these are the types of things that we ask for the information when somebody comes in to get a building permit. So we know what's zoning district they're in, and have they found the property pins. And if there's any questions about setbacks and whether they're legal, we would require that property pins have been found, and we have gone so far from time to time as to require survey. We wanna know the front yard and the rear yard setbacks. Those are both measured to overhangs. Number of stories, being one story, two stories, or it could be a story and a half. Um, this says left side or right side yard, again, measuring to setback, or, excuse me, to the overhangs, and, and that's gotta be at least a minimum of four feet off the property line. If, if they sit on an alley, they gotta be at least 10 feet from the alley. We ask for the height at the peak, 'cause we regulate height. The height on a main structure, maximum height that's 35 feet. Just a couple requirements about, about minimum housing standards. And we, actually, we have three minimum housing standards. The first one is they gotta be on a permanent frost-free foundation, but that can be a peered foundation, and you'll see that from time to time with, with manufactured homes. It can be a, a peer foundation. Rough pitch needs to be three to 12 or greater. We also have a minimum square footage requirement, that's 700 square feet for a minimum square footage. Check for open space requirements, and this is, this is an issue from time to time, partly dealing with what the definition of open space is. 'Cause the question then is, is whether, basically whether driveways are considered part of open space. And that's come up here recently, really was questioned. And if driveways aren't part of open space, there's some real issues from time to time on, especially on lake lots. We ask about any easements, and whether they're encroached upon any known easements. Do they enclose their water over the electric or gas meter? And of course, this is one thing that we check for, because it's happened before, you know, that people would enclose it. So, we do ask about that. Does it meet off-street parking requirements? If they're doing it, basically any water sewer work, we require tracer wires to be installed now too, so we would ask them and, and go through this requirement with them, that tracer wires be installed. And whether a state electrical permit is required. We ask about whether addressing water runoff, and it's just really informational. We don't govern that necessarily, but we wanna know about downspouts and that type of stuff, and whether they're really putting any water on their neighbor. We, we have always considered, and we still consider, you know, water on your neighbor's still a civil issue, but we do, we do want to try to mitigate that during construction if we can. Bottom part, then, dealing with just accessory buildings, about whether they're attached to the primary structure or not. Are they enclosed with four walls? That's the thing about, uh, freestanding carports. Basically, it ends up being a prohibition on pre, on freestanding carports. If you're gonna have a carport, it needs to be securely attached to your main structure. Uh, height at the peak, maximum height of accessory buildings is 15 feet, if they're freestanding. Are they any closer to the front lot line than the principal structure? If, if it's a detached garage, it can't be any closer to the front lot line than, than what the principal structure is. Is it a standalone garage on a residential lot? We have some restriction on that too. It's only allowing, allowed in certain areas. And then is the detached garage residential in character? It's those required to be, to look somewhat residential. And then there's this issue about the vertical corrugated metal site. Next page just shows a little bit about, about concrete, what we would do to check on concrete, about thickness of sidewalks and driveway back slope. And then a few things on fences, about the material and the height, distance from the lot line. And as the neighbor signed off on it, if it's gonna be on the lot line, the neighbor needs to sign off on it. Uh, I guess my point just being, those are the things that we look for. And as we talk about the building inspector, you know, that's what he's, that's, that's what they're out there looking for, is, is these things in particular. And, you know, the last issue dealing with siding was kind, kind of a unique issue, because it wasn't necessarily a zoning, a traditional zoning issue, it's a lot more of a building materials type of an issue. And, and the question came up about how, how does that end up, how did that happen before? You know, and at what point does, does it get inspected? So let's, we can still walk through the rest of that on page two. We'll go through some of that stuff about the inspection. So the person has got, got this application from me, and, and then we can answer any questions. We generally go through what their project is. Sometimes, it can just be that an application shows up, because they can just get the application form without any of the attachments. You just get the form off the internet. Uh, the application, the applicant returns the application, then, and all that we ask for is that footprint drawing, showing the distance to the property lines, and, and then the fee is paid, is paid then. It's $50 for small projects, or $100 for projects that are 50,000 or more. And of that, though, the building inspector is fa, is paid $40 for each application that's received. Okay? And that then be, becomes an issue from time to time, 'cause some of these projects, especially a new, new housing construction or anything like that, as Daryl goes around and checks on them, it's, it's several inspections, um, and, you know, basically, he, he ends up doing a lot of work for 40 bucks. Now, sometimes a shed is, is set out there, and you get paid $40 for watching them set a shed, you know? So a little, it's a little give and take, but the, um, the pay is not, you know, it's not a lot. So then two copies of, I'd give two copies of this application to the building inspector, and the building inspector goes out and he checks the site, measures up the setbacks. Again, he's just checking for these, these issues the way we went through on the zoning code. And then, if the application meets the regulation, the building inspector signs it and returns it to me. If it, if it does not meet the regulation, the inspector talks with that applicant, is gonna inform them where it does not meet the code, and tries to work with them, if possible, about ways to make it compliant. But if there are problems that can't, that can't be corrected, or if the applicant wants variance, then Daryl would, would turn the issue over to me, and we'd work through, um, with the, with the applicant about a variance process. Or sometimes the answer's just know that they can't get it fixed, and they're, and we're not, not able to accommodate what they want. Building inspector, if they approve it, it's of course then submitted to the city council, the project proceeds. And then, the, the building inspector goes out to those approved projects, he does check on them. And, just that at some point in the, in the process, after the construction is basi, basically substantially complete, he's going to sign off on it as a second inspection that had been approved. Okay? Well, again, that's the, the deal, say, about the siding issue that we had last time. So we're, look, we're checking for zoning compliance, and we know that the construction's done, and the, the building's not getting any bigger, but the siding's not on. And, you know, it certainly has been that he signed off on second approval on those, and, and just turned it in, you know? Because, by and large, we don't regulate a lot of the materials. Now, with the siding then being, you know, the one issue that we would. Okay? So, um, I guess I'm just interested in your thoughts on the process. I mean, is there, is there opportunities where you think things could be at all changed to, to avoid any of the problems? You know, 'cause my, my initial feelings on things are, we go through things, and Daryl's been our building inspector for 18 years. And over the course of 18 years, we've had a handful of issues, and that's about it. But we do have problems from time to time, and, um, some of it has, and we've changed this process along the way, and added that checklist and this type of stuff, so.
So has anything been said or done about that corrugated metal?
No. Just that it would be a, a planning and zoning issue. We haven't had a planning and zoning meeting.
My question is, I guess, I don't know how other towns do this, so I'm just throwing this out here. Having a building inspector on the P and Z, is that a good thing, or is that a conflict of interest thing?
I think they should be separate.
And it may be a good time to separate them out. For us, it, it always worked pretty well, because he was very knowledgeable then, on both ends of things. That the inspector certainly knew what was going on, and as a P and Z member, he was very, uh...
Maybe, but I'm thinking, uh, the inspector needs to come to some of the meetings, and, you know?
Oh, sure could be too.
You know, instead, instead of him being on the board. Or the committee.
Jerry, what do you think?
They'd probably be present, but not necessarily have a board.
I think Scott has a good idea, or has, is right. I mean, there's times, I know, I sent in on some of the meetings, there's a lot of times that Daryl was able to answer questions right off the bat, and he knew what the, he knew, Daryl knew the ordinances, he knew his code.
Okay.
But, so I think there's a trade-off. I mean, conflict, probably, you know? So, I don't know. On the other hand, if you had two different people, you got two different opinions.
True.
So, I don't think that's a bad idea either.
So you're kinda saying that, think they should be separate, is that what you're...
I think so. I mean, but, you know, it's not, like you said, unless you have somebody that's pretty knowledgeable, like you are, you know?
Well, you know, you could do, there's a number of ways that you could do this too. If you have a, a meeting like that, and you need the building inspector, why couldn't we pay him to come?
To send in a meeting or send...
Send a meeting, so that way, I mean, that way, he is there to help settle issues or any, uh, questions that might be on somebody's mind. And I think that way, you don't look at, well, the building inspector's giving him a special break, 'cause he's on the P and Z's, and so it'd be a whole different idea. I don't know. What do you think, Dave?
That sounds good. I mean, do we, and how do we pay him? Do we pay him the whopping $25 we get from the land?
Well, that's, that's...
That's a going rate.
Yeah. Uh, Dave, can we ask Dave questions tonight?
Hey, we are. You approved the agreement.
What, uh, what kind of experience have you had with...
I've, I've never seen a building inspector be on the P and Z. I think it, it has a lot to commend it, though, when you think about it. I don't think it's technically, uh, what we would call a conflict of interest, because, uh, there's other members of the board, so I don't think it's legally prohibited.
A conflict, yeah.
But, um, on the other hand, the building inspector's providing evidence, so to speak, to the, to the board, and the board is acting as an adjudicator as to whether or not the variance should be granted, so it would probably be cleaner if, if, if he's not a member of the board.
So we need the P and Z to come with recommendations to the council? What we want, what we don't want?
As far as what?
I mean, there's something you wanna change?
Um, well, I don't know, I don't know that there, that there's anything to change, but I do think it's a terrific opportunity to discuss.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, I don't have a lot of experience being a building inspector and stuff, so as far as input, I guess, you know, until, I guess, we talk.
Would this be something where you'd get some of your local construction guys to deal with this kinda stuff?
We're hoping to tap one of those guys for building inspector, I would think.
Well, no, that, but I mean, if there's something there, they could take a little more action of saying, "Hey, maybe this should be in there." Like you say...
Yeah, that's, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Get a little of their feedback on it.
Yeah, and I mean, this kinda...
Send them a questionnaire?
Well, like I said, you know, we know who's all around here that builds homes and does different things, and just ask for some input. I mean, you know, we're getting a feel of what the contractors got to work with every day, so I hope.
It's a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Couldn't they put a letter together to send it out to all the contractors and say, "Hey, how's your time? Tell us what you think."
Tell, tell them we're looking for it.
Yeah.
I don't know if they'll do it for, maybe for 25 bucks, so.
We do.
We're forced.
We're idiots.
We're forced.
I've tried to, I've tried to get us raised every year, and they say we can't. We gotta get the next council raise. I said, "Well, that ain't gonna happen."
No, we'll send out a letter and see if we get some response.
Yeah.
See if there's anybody interested, I guess, and...
We sure can. I, I wanna go through a few other things yet on, on this issue, and it's on page three of the memo. And this deals with that, the issue that Cody brought up at the last meeting about zoning administrator. Okay? She, she said that, that we have these two chapters of the code. And one, that we have a separate chapter on building permits, and, and then we have a chapter on, on the city zoning ordinance. Okay? And in the building permits chapter, the building officials are identified, and it's the building inspector, and the mayor, and city clerk. Okay? And so, we've always kinda just administered things along those lines with the three people as administrators. Okay? But our zoning code calls for a specific zoning administrator, which I would think that we have never appointed a standalone zoning administrator.
Not in 25 years.
Yeah.
That I know of.
You know, so, um, that's an issue, I think, to address, about, again, how do you think the, the admin, the zoning administrator ought to be? 'Cause in the building permit section, where we have the three people who are identified as building, uh, building officials. And, so it was me, and Daryl, and the mayor. And what we find out is that Daryl takes care of all of the inspections and doing the outside work, and I take care of all of the paperwork and working with anybody on any special requests, and, you know, kinda getting them ready for the application and talking through the, the process. And then the mayor can be involved, but he sure hasn't been over history. I think we had been involved in a couple issues maybe, and that's about it. So, um, at some point, we should designate a zoning, a zoning administrator.
Separate from the building inspector?
That's the question, I guess, too.
Can't they be a combined job? And then have a separate person on the planning and zoning instead of the building inspector?
Sure. I mean, you sure can be.
Say that again?
You, you would have your, a normal person applied, applied, or on the planning and zoning board.
Okay.
And then your building inspector and your zoning administrator would be like a combined one-person position.
Okay.
But they would not be on the P and Z board. They would kinda like sit in if they needed to, oversee that end of it, answer questions like you say, but it would be completely separate from the planning and zoning actual board.
Just that the practical side of that is that, you look through these duties that I've listed there about the zoning administrator that are in our code, a lot of them are administrative duties that I would do. So it gets to be a, kind of a sticky issue on that, you know, as far as, again, separating job responsibilities. And if you'd only have one zoning administrator, it would, it would be strange to have our part-time zoning administrator doing a lot of the administrative work.
Very tough. So, if we did it this way, would that make a difference? Say you would do the, generate the paperwork, do the paperwork, and then whoever this person would come in and review it and okay it? Would that seem to be the right way to do that, or...
Well, they would still be doing what Daryl, yeah, and you would still continue to do your administrative part of it.
The process that we have probably is not bad. I think it's just, you know, naming of who is the zoning administrator? Is there one, one or two? If we have two, there's always the opportunity then for, uh, a disagreement between the two.
Mm-huh.
Although there is, um, there's a process in place, you know, for hearing, um, I guess, what do we call it? Appeals of the zoning administrator's decision, and that goes to the board adjustment.
Can't we make the city clerk the zoning administrator?
Oh, you could, but I don't know that you really wanna do that, you know, unless you wanna have a building inspector, and then you have a zoning administrator.
We just don't wanna pay anybody else.
Welcome to Iowa. We had no kidding.
Who would you recommend to be that? Somebody?
Yeah, and, and I don't know, 'cause the practical side of things, again, is that I'm probably gonna work with the applicant a lot up front, and answer questions, you know, I'm personally come to see a lot of that stuff.
Why don't we leave it the way it is then?
And we sure can.
I mean, you and the mayor, and whoever the building inspector is.
Yep. You know, and...
I mean, it's a matter of identity is what it is.
Yeah, I think so. And I, I'd be fine, you know, I think, like I say, I think practically...
You have to deal with it anyway. You have to deal with the administrative part of it anyway.
Mm-hmm.
The mayor is basically the third person that, I mean, needs to be involved.
True.
Like you said, you've never had too many issues with it, so...
Not too many, but, but if there's an issue, and it ends up back with the city council, like, you know, there's an argument that says that ought never happen.
Yeah.
You know, it, it ought to be able to be attended to.
Yeah, well...
I still feel that the building inspector, though, should be someone that is not on the P and Z board.
And that's, yep, we can...
That's just...
Right. No, I agree with that too.
We just go it that way, and then still with the administration like we have in the past? Does that help?
Right. That's what I'm thinking, but yeah, but the zoning person needs to be a separate person in, from the building inspector, in my book.
Yeah.
So do we need to instruct the city clerk to put an ad in the paper for a building inspector?
So, just wanna advertise for the building inspector?
Yeah, I'm glad they should.
Sure.
Let's have a motion authorized, Scott, to put that in the paper. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay, Woltman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Huss.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
I'll put a notice out there about P and Z then, too.
Yeah. Okay, let's talk about the concrete disposal.
The concrete disposal site. So did everybody know where this was at about, about Eugene and Verla's Traders Farm, south of town? So it's a little pit that's on the south side of the east-west gravel road.
Mm-hmm. I think it'd be a good idea.
Must be like a win-win.
No kidding? You're gonna have to pit up there.
We're gonna have a, a moat out there and a pit.
Yeah. So, I was asking Dave about, about some opinion on that. You just, can you go through that a little bit, Dave, and what you're thinking?
Well, uh, we will have to go through a permit process with the DNR, and probably, uh, since it's a gravel pit, we might have to check in with the mining inspectors for the state of Iowa, and make sure that they agree with the way that the landowners are rebuilding or replacing the permit. I understand it to be an abandoned gravel pit, or a former gravel, gravel pit.
Yep.
And then the city would have to have, uh, the environmental people from the DNR approve this as a place to dispose concrete, which I don't think, it isn't, uh, it isn't difficult, but it has to be done. We can't just start the process and then come in and ask for forgiveness afterwards, because they get a little touchy about stuff like that.
My son-in-law was talking about this, and he said if there's water in the bottom of the pit, you have more issues.
Yeah.
If it was dry, he said you wouldn't have no problem. If it was dry, he said he wouldn't have no problem.
And you can't have, if there's water involved, then you have to have the, the water people from the DNR involved with it, too. And also you've gotta watch out for anything that's not ferrous, any iron or steel, that type of thing. So there's issues like that that would have to be ironed out. I don't know what, the concrete you get, does it usually have rebar in it or not?
Yeah, I suppose a lot of it would.
It might have to be crushed out, that's, I mean, once you start down that road, there's a lot of issues with how to place it in that pit. But like Jerry says, it's a win-win deal, so there ought to be a way to work it out.
Well, that and for what, for what cost to push the dump back all the time.
So it, this would save us a couple thousand dollars a year to
Oh, yeah.
to have somebody come push it back, but.
But they also said like, uh, well, Chewie or those guys, you know, Dean Quirker, they also have a grinding the concrete, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And if there was enough there, they would run that through, see, and of course, then you have iron to separate, which we could sell, too, you know, but, uh, or else they're, they're always dumping out at, uh, the other pit, you know, to, south of town, you know, a mile over. It's a little further, but then we wouldn't have to bury it either, you know, so.
But this will be up to the landlord to get all this stuff done. We don't wanna get involved in this.
Well, it depends on how you, I sent Scott a copy of the code that we would be concerned with. And if the city's involved, I think we have to have some type of either an easement or a lease. We don't want any ownership, obviously. But, yeah, that was my initial reaction, was the more that the, uh, property owner wanted to take on, the better this would be for the city. Because that, once, once the municipality becomes involved, there's a lot, we have to do it right. We have to have the right permits and the right blessings. Whereas the landowners, particularly agriculture and farm owners, tend to get away without having to do as much paperwork as a city does.
You know, it just seems like, obviously, we're involved in this somehow when we put a sign out there that says, "Concrete disposal site."
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
It also becomes a liability issue for insurance for the landowner.
Well, and for the city, you know, for that matter.
You'd just have to move the sign down. Well, I mean, you'd have to direct them with the fat creep to go to the corner and then, you know, to get in there somehow.
So our next step is to pursue it?
Yeah, I say, I just really wanna know if the council is interested in, in seeing this happen, and if so, we'll work with the, with the property owners and.
Well, I think he needs, the guy that, this trader needs to check it out and see what, with DNR and see what they can do.
Well, and we will, too. We'll, we'll be looking at that. Calling DNR and seeing what, what would need to be done.
What do you think it's gonna take to fill that pit? Two years, it's gonna be full anyway. So, I mean, it ain't a long-term deal for the city. Two years, then it's gonna be full.
Why can't Hancock just take their truck out every day instead of dumping it ours, just take it there? There's no rerodding, nothing.
Just talk to, tell Hancock to do that and it gets the city out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Dump their trucks down there and let, let contractors take it down to the dump. You don't have nothing to do with it. That's between Hancock and them other people, the city involved.
We're out of the loop that way.
So how, how much of the rubble down there comes from Hancock versus?
I'd say seventy-five to eighty percent of it is Hancock's.
Well, we'll take that very long. I mentioned that the other day, let, let them guys do that.
They can legally dump that. Well, I knew they could, they're doing it, they can legally dump that.
We've already danced with the DNR and laws, we don't wanna do that again.
They're not good leaders, but.
No, they let it go on a bad path.
Should we just start with Hancock?
Yeah, I'm, I'll talk with the property owner and really encourage them that that would happen, and we'd just kinda stay out of it.
Yeah.
If it becomes, if they're interested in pursuing it further, we can still talk with the DNR, the DNR more about it, but.
Well, but then can't you just press that out on our side that there is no concrete private, or?
Well, you sure could, but not if we're, not if we would allow private dumping there. You know, we'd still allow for the private folks to do that and just send Hancock down there. That's down to, uh, traders.
Hancock could dump and the rest of the guys would just go right where they're going now. Cause the other guy's got rod in it, Hancock doesn't have any rod in there.
No.
It's just their extra stuff.
So that would be a win-win situation. A triple win.
Yeah, cause they keep it out of ours.
Mm-hmm, it's a win-stars.
Very good.
Okay, Scott's looking for permission to put the recordings on the website.
Yeah, I'd tell you that if, if we want to video the, uh, meetings, it's probably a good thing, it's, get it out there to the public. If it goes on the city's website, would like council permission for that to happen first.
So you want a motion to approve that? Or you just want a head count?
Yeah, if we can, if we could do that.
What, a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make it.
Second? Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yes.
Huss.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Can I discuss this just a little bit more then? Cause we'll, we'll get this on the, on the website. You know, what, what'll happen is we'll put a, it'll go on YouTube and we just end up with a link on the city's website so that you can, you can watch that on YouTube. But as I start to think about these issues more, just more issues kinda pop up, I just want some, need some guidance from y'all on that. That at some point, we'd have, likely have a resolution to approve that. That it would, uh, just me, starting the third one, third paragraph down. So we'd resolve to, uh, that the clerk should be responsible for making the video. And, uh, further resolve that the, uh, the audio and video of council meetings be disseminated through the website, okay? And that the audio or video needs to be posted within so many days of a council meeting. And I, I think that's appropriate and we oughta, uh, have a requirement there, but at the same time, uh, you know, things happen and it always can't be posted the next day. But, you know, in my mind, I would have every intention of having it done quickly, but if, if that were to say seven days, I would kinda like that. It's just, uh, again, having, uh, opportunities not to, that I, you know, you're covered on having any technical problems or any scheduling issues.
So, so if you could put a consistency on it, so we may meet on the first and third Mondays. So if we'd have it posted by the second and fourth Monday, that would show a consistency that, that everybody, once they seen the pattern, it'd be there instead of it not being there.
Intermittent.
Yeah, you know, I, the intent, the intention would be to have it up quickly. You know, you know, cause I'm sure people are interested shortly after it happens. But, uh, like I said, just problems can occur and I don't, I sure don't wanna, fail to meet a requirement because we had some problem. Um, the next one is more of a question, though. There's some options about Corn Belt Public Access Channel. And, you know, whether you'd, whether you would like to be able to run that on the public access channel. And, and issues about, uh, Facebook. You know, this is kind of the idea of, we put the link on our website, people can come look at it on our website. The other side is more pushing it out to the public through public access or, or Facebook. And there certainly is an argument that says, no, you've fulfilled your obligation if you just put it on your website and people know where to go find it. But I would, you know, like to have, think about that question about whether you'd like to do any proactive pushing through the, through Corn Belt or through Facebook.
Does it cost to have it on Corn Belt?
Yeah.
No. It's, if, if they're running the same thing like they did for churches, it didn't cost the same.
It doesn't?
I look at it, if you leave it on our city one, that gets people to look at our city.
So their website?
The website, then they look at other things. I mean, I don't know if that, you're trying to focus on mainly the local people anyway. And then if you wanna go, you know, the word don't get out to where it's at, so it's up to.
It seems to me that Facebook is the age, is the age we live in. I mean, the SAC News has been putting it on there, right, they're putting it on Facebook.
Yep.
You can always put the link on Facebook, though. I mean, always put the, you can go to the website to get it, you know?
Rather than having the whole thing on Facebook, just put the link.
Mm-hmm.
Can you put the link to YouTube straight away?
Well, and that's kind of the question, though, really, is, um, again, it's pushing the information out versus having the public come to the website. And there certainly is an argument that says it's okay that they come to the website.
Maybe I'd, uh, try the website first and if you get too many complaints that they'd like to see it on Facebook or something, then we could do that, too.
Well, then, yeah, by, by rights, there shouldn't be any complaints. If somebody come, comes up and says, I'd like to see that, yep, it's on our website, you click on there and that's how you get it.
Well, we can put on Facebook, you know, to see the meetings, please go to the website.
Mm-hmm, and I'd likely do that through the newsletter, anyway. Say we're gonna, they'll be, uh, they'll be on.
I like the idea of drawing traffic to the website. So, yeah, if you put the link on and just say, you know, if it's on Facebook, just say, this is the link for it, then it still draws them to the city website.
Do we update that regular?
Where they can see more of what's happening, you know, in the area.
We'll say, uh, maybe not as regular as what we'd like. You know, I would tell you that, uh, updating the webpage is just another one of the things that's done, and Kay, Kay does it. But it, you know, it's done at the end of the day, if you got some time, you know, it, it's, oftentimes doesn't end up being real high priority, but if we're gonna hold our feet to the fire about putting a link up there, it'll be done.
This shows we got nothing to hide.
Yeah.
So you're gonna bring this resolution to the next council meeting?
Yeah, I sure can, but I wanna go through these next couple of points yet, too. Cause this, this will happen, uh, from time to time and I need to know how to address it when it does happen, you know, if people do want a copy of the file. This would say, of course, they're public. Um, and if they want a file that's small enough that we can email it, that I would email it free. If, if they want a video file, gets to be too big to email, they get it for free if they bring their own media. Or if the city provides media, it's like we'd be providing anything else. We have a general policy on anything we provide to the public is cost plus twenty percent.
You should be able to put in a Dropbox. Just drop it in Dropbox and they can do it.
I suppose. That, that stuff I'm not very good at. I need to learn. And about retention policy, this would say, maintain it for a year. After a while, you know, it gets to be pretty large and then you have storage concerns, but, um, there's nothing, there's no state mandated requirement about, about retainage, and actually, one year is, uh, how long you have to retain closed session stuff. So it's just, uh, the only thing that I have, uh, even a little rule of thumb about. And the last one there, that members of the public are always welcome to record the council meetings using their personal equipment. And I think it's, just wanna let everybody know, know that, anyway. If somebody wants to go up and record, they sure can. Everybody all right with that?
No, no problem.
Take out the thing about Corn Belt, please. Okay, thank you, that helps.
Okay, herbicide.
Uh, yeah, pardon me?
You have a better deal?
We do have two options. And the one for the application was four hundred and ten dollars less, but I would tell you that, uh, you know, consulting with, with Ben Wallace and Jim Millenacher, you know, they're just really pleased with, with the work of this aquatic environment consultants last year. And the one thing that they're able to promise us that the other one can't is that they can do the job in one day. And the other one, this would be a, just a much bigger job than, than what they could, uh, say that they could handle. You know, guaranteeing that it would all be done in that same day. Total cost on, on AEC, and that's the same one we used last year, is nineteen thousand four hundred. It's, you see, last year's price was eighteen nine forty, so it's up four hundred and sixty dollars. Now, the really good news out of that is that, uh, the DNR has come up with fifteen thousand dollars to put towards the herbicide application. So it's just the, uh, four thousand four hundred dollars that would be split amongst the partners then. And so it's the city and the LPA, and SAC County has said they'd participate again.
Heard some comments about that. People like it.
Oh, yeah.
They do.
Has the Black Hawk Lake Association Board looked at this?
Just Millenacher, just Jim. And the, because the city would be the contracting authority. They're just looking at this, saying they'd like to, like to get it in place, start, um, know where they're at. You know, the argument was you gotta work on permits, there actually is no permit anymore. So, because the, because the DNR is the applicator. Okay, so. Anyway, I would recommend then, AEC is the same company as last year.
I was gonna say that, we know what you got there.
Mm-hmm.
Been through it once and then they did a good job as far as I'm concerned.
Everything was happening with it.
Yeah.
I just had a guy ask me the other day if they're gonna do that again.
There's big improvement.
I haven't heard anything yet, but now I have.
So you need a motion?
Yeah, please.
So, second?
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Wolman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Huss.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Sue Mine and Lois Long have asked to be reappointed to the historic preservation, I think that'd be a good idea.
So move.
Second? Roll call.
Wolman.
Her name is no longer Mine, Mom.
Oh, yes.
Barney.
Sue Barney.
Did she change, changed her name?
Yeah, she got married.
She got married?
I, I knew she got married.
To Mr. Barney?
Changed her name.
To Mr. Barney, that's good.
To Mr. Ken Barney.
Ken, yes. Okay, uh, Wolman.
Oh, yes.
We're voting.
Sorry.
Wolman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Huss.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Okay, Camp Crescent had a good year?
Oh, Ruth, it needs.
No firing squad for you, there you go. Good job.
You wanna bring up a chair, though, Ruth, and you'll, cause we'll start to talk through all of the departmental stuff, too.
Cause we do your department, department needs first, cause Ruthie gets everything she wants.
It's all downhill after that.
Cause she has a little crush.
Yep.
Don't listen to that.
The coffee, look?
Yeah, this is a female part.
What day? Fourteen.
Fourteen.
So, there it is.
Well, good job, thanks, have a great day.
I do wish you to be aware. Don't expect this every year, because even though fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, we've had construction, people down there all the time. This year, and I never kept track of that until this year, this year, just the construction income was forty-eight thousand, just from the construction people. So that makes a big difference.
Before you take that off, that's still a pretty, pretty good year.
I know, but, but we had, in, in between the last three years, we've had, like, the Highway Twenty, we've had the ethanol plant, we've had, uh, elevator at early, we've had windmill. We've had lots.
Pipeline.
And now all the pipeline this year, and, and I think there'll be some of those coming back next year to finish up or to repair what they damaged.
Well, I think it's pretty well.
Or to take out.
Take it out, you know?
They have to come back and do a lot of the, you know.
They was working on that the other day while we went.
Were they?
Oh, yeah.
Were they?
Getting it all out, looks good.
We'd take a look at the top line there, just the camping, just the camping line, and you can just compare it over the years. But we were talking about what makes for a good year. What, you know, in this case, what makes for a good year is construction helps out a lot, okay? Lake, of course, was in, was, was high and in really good condition. And, but the other thing is all those improvements that we made down at the campground, particularly the, uh, concrete pads. You know, there, as we look at the, the sites on the, on the next page, you can just kinda see what, what each one of those spaces generates. Concrete pads come through pretty good.
I thought it was that free washing, but.
We aren't do that yet.
Well, if you look at concessions, look at concessions, that's more than double.
Just you and the calculator, Scott?
Was that, was that?
He was a doubter, wasn't he?
I'm ready for this.
And I'm never gonna let him forget it. We bought.
Yeah, she's gonna ride you like she's older.
My notes. I wouldn't tell it.
I would say the mayor's bought a lot of those, uh.
We purchased, um, oh my gosh, fourteen hundred and forty for reals.
Three, okay.
And we sold fourteen hundred and fifteen of them. We paid for the machine and we didn't even get it till the first of July.
Yeah, well.
Well done.
It's true, yes, nice job, Ruth.
So we need two of them, huh?
But it will, it was well worth it. Now we just have to come up with some other new ideas. But other than that, what else do we need to go keep?
Not really, just, uh, just know that all of the harvester costs and revenues and all of the herbicide costs and revenues are rolled into this parks analysis, too, because we always look, wanna look at the bottom line. We wanna say that the income from the, from the campground pays for parks operations. And that is all parks operation that pays for the, for the personnel to, to, uh, maintain all of our droughts. And then you still get to that bottom line. So, you know, you can say, we made seventy-eight thousand dollars this year. Okay, that's not all true. We don't pay ourselves for utilities, you know, is the one thing that's, that's often brought up. We, we pay ourselves, but it doesn't come out of Ruthie's account.
On my account, oh, good.
Yeah, but we still, of course, we still had a great year. Generated lots of revenue.
So what does electric bill cost down there?
We don't know, it's not metered.
It is metered.
Oh, it is metered. Then why don't we?
We, and we do, we actually bill ourselves, but the electric department pays for the electric down there, the water department pays for the water down there.
It'd be kinda nice to know, though, how much is.
I just was, I just.
You know?
You know?
And we can quickly find out, it's just an account.
You did know that one time, didn't you?
It's $191,000.
Enough.
Oh, Ruth, you walked into that one.
I'd ask, it's $2,300 gallons every month.
That's a drop in the pot.
But we do have those numbers, I can get them pretty quickly, but...
How much?
It'd be about $2,000.
That's not bad.
That's only four or five months, six months.
Ruth, is there a way we can get Mike to work more hours so that you don't get behind in the spring?
Mike worked five hours less than Eric did this year, or five weeks less than Eric did, and he's working less and less every year for us. So we're gonna have to either jack him up or something.
And what's an issue in the spring if he's not here?
I know.
Not a good one.
No. Because Eric is a darn good employee and I don't want to lose Eric getting frustrated about something.
He's the best one I've seen down there in all the years I've been here.
He's a good one. Never complains, just works. stays on the move.
They're rare.
Yeah. Look at that, I don't even have, I want you to know, Scott added the splash pad on mine.
Yeah. Gosh, you want to walk through this stuff on our departmental needs assessment, Ruth? And just for each one of the departments, what you see, council is, we have this vehicle and equipment inventory for each of the departments, so that's on page 16. And this is gonna have the department heads rate their equipment, rate the condition of the equipment, note anything that's, you know, poor conditioner, needs to be addressed. It also then has mileage or hours on it, so you can see the mileage and hours on each one of these pieces of equipment. Next page then kind of does the same thing for the facilities. Gives a condition rating of the facilities, you know, asks about capacity, are they too big, too small? And then what's happening with annual maintenance cost and then whether there'd be any comments. And then the one that they'll be most interested in talking about is page 19, then for each one of the departments, you'll see this, the departmental needs assessment, where they'll be talking about budget priorities for this year and for upcoming years. You want to walk through those, Ruthie?
Sure, Scotty.
That's Mr. Freeze to you, Ruth.
Yeah, that's Mr. Freeze.
Well, we have that trade-in, that lawnmower trade-in every year, so that's a good deal. We never got our mulch for the playground last year, which we need to do because that needs to be replaced. It's not replaced or added to.
Didn't get that done?
We didn't get any additional stuff, no. The only stuff that's down there is from the original project.
And it needs to be taken care of.
Well, they do eat it?
I don't know, it just disappears.
And it even starts seeing all the rock through it?
We got it through the playground company and it's some specially engineered wood fiber.
So how far is that shipped to?
Minnesota, I'm telling you. Didn't it come from Minnesota? Didn't sound right?
The truck walked it on the way back and dumped it off? It was a reefer load and then they had the walking deals in it.
Had a walking floor.
Out back.
What Custer has of his?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what that is, okay. Well, then they'd have used that belt to put it down.
Yeah.
This, in this case, it would be half a load, you know?
Oh.
It's not, it's just filling in in areas, it's not redoing at all.
And the kiosk for the historic sites, where did you say they were gonna go?
So we'll do historic kiosks at Speaker Park, Stone Piers, and...
Witch's Tower.
And Witch's Tower. Okay, and we did get the Sack County Endowment grant to fund half of that then, so. And the Historic Preservation Commission's kind of heading that up as far as the design of the kiosks. And that's some, lots of nice comments on the one down there by the chief, and they would all be just real similar to that. And splash pad, and yes, I added that on to Ruth's priorities, just to make sure that it stays in the mix. We need to continue to talk about that. That $120,000 is probably where we end up on price. That's what we'll be talking with people about as we continue to go out and fundraise, is $120,000. The design actually is a different design than what we had looked at originally, it's a different company. But this different company was able to meet the things that the committee really liked, like a big concrete pad that basically has an outline of a lake in it. And it gives the, again, it's just the outline of the lake, it's another way to tie this into being water related.
So Scott, can you say something? Are you, is the council then gonna look at that in the budget for next year? Because they didn't get a grant because they didn't have any city support, and I just wondered if 2017, if you plan to kind of address that again, look at that again?
That's what we had talked about, was...
You know, I mean, I know they've made mistakes, but they're volunteers, they're not getting paid anything. And they're not professional planners, so, you know, I just think they need to move forward with it, and I'm hoping that the council will see fit to help them, at least so they can get grants, you know? It really cuts their legs off if they're not able to get any grants. And I don't remember what you gave for the playground, but I know that you helped out.
About 35, yeah.
35, I think is what the thing was, yeah.
Yeah, just for the people in the crowd, what we're doing tonight is kind of the start of a budget process for us. What we do is have all of our department heads go through and work through their inventory and then work towards this needs assessment about what it is that they want to do. So this is how we introduce things that come to the budget discussion for next year. Or you'll hear a couple of things for two and three years from now.
On and on the south side of the building?
The west side of the office?
West side.
Yeah, that was there since the office was built and the canvas is torn and the frame is bent and we needed a new on it.
And the water pad or something, isn't that, the mini golf pad has to be repaired, the water? You got that done?
The water.
Wouldn't you said the water was leaking out or something? Or was that something else that was broke? Mike was supposed to fix it, wasn't he?
Oh, the pond?
Pond, yeah, the pond is...
Yeah, that needs some attention because the wall is caving in.
So we'll have to talk really nice to Lon?
Glad you're alive. Go ahead and say no, see where that's gonna get you.
Might get a reel out of it.
Yeah.
Hey, I did you some free mini golf.
So on the benches, then, Ruth, would we look at these as possible memorial benches?
Could, could.
And they'd be the same type of concrete benches that we have all around town?
Yes. And then the more concrete pads. What, do you, I mean, we're talking, that we have to plan two, three years ahead of time, with the reservations that far ahead of time. Because we have to, probably would have to eliminate some sites and figure out what we're gonna have.
How many can we get for $20,000?
I don't, I don't have any idea.
I know, the ones that we did...
I don't remember what we did last time.
Was about that much, maybe a little bit more, was...
For the ones we did?
What we did last time, yeah.
That's all it costs? For all of them?
For all the concrete, yeah. And the whole project's a lot more than that, that was just concrete.
Yeah, but the concrete was $20,000 for the 20 pads?
Sound about right?
That seems awful reasonable, but...
Yeah, it takes us good.
Yeah.
Did you throw out that concrete?
I believe we did.
One I saw and you got ripped off.
She's tough to that. She's tough. I cannot believe they got, how many pads was that?
20.
That was 20.
I cannot believe they got that done for $20,000.
Maybe there's supposed to be one in front of that.
That's, I would tell you, that's my number, Terry.
Oh.
Maybe I'm wrong.
Maybe there's supposed to be one in front of that or something.
Could be.
Ruthie, what section would we do?
I don't know, I was talking to Nancy about that, we'd have to figure that out.
Yeah, what if we did just right across the street where all the gravel is?
Right across the street.
Right across.
From the new pads.
For the new pads, if we were looking at the section, the 150...
Or usually can?
Yeah.
We would have to eliminate some sites in there because they're already getting too small.
Yeah, I know they are.
Yeah. That's a...
And it'd almost alleviate a lot of water, too, because they flood so easily.
I don't know, we'll have to think about it, but...
The water's running the wrong way, you're gonna have to change the way the water runs, take it to the east. And it's draining west right now.
Yeah.
But if you raise that up, none of it eaves well. You'd have to really do some thinking about that. You might have to dig them down, if anything, dig it out.
Yeah.
Dig the white rock out and put your pad in, and I think you can make it work.
Then you'd be driving over concrete instead of mud, really. Because, I mean, it gets like...
Well, we can make it just like a pass that are there, but it's gonna be considerable amount of dirt work again. Seems to me there's like six inches of fall from the very west driveway all the way across those paths. There's only six inches of fall, if I remember right. We have to pave around this summer, but that was... And we can make it run the other way, but we'd have to do some canal work.
Well, we could look at the sites all over, I guess, and...
Ruth, you could come up with a plan and then talk to Lon this winter when we're not working quite so hard.
But if you're eliminating sites, then you gotta redo all the water, all the electrical, right?
There's the water department and there's the electrical.
End of story.
Like Ruth's got a plan.
We look forward to a plan, Ruth, because it really makes a difference on the money coming in if you fix it up, right? Build it and there will come.
You bet, because these campers are getting so big, my gosh, when you, when they come in 40 foot long with five slide outs and, you know...
So is there any merit to doing away with your C-section?
I'd love to, where are you gonna put the carnival? Your backyard?
Auburn, Auburn.
You just don't reserve them for the weekend, you know?
I don't want to make it nice for the carnival.
Okay.
Well, you know, we talked about doing something over there, but...
Yeah, just discuss.
But what, I mean, the way they jam in there, I'd...
You're live.
Huh?
You're live.
Can I sit quiet enough, Scott?
Give it some thought, Ruth.
Okay.
I will.
Okay. That it? You did fine.
I learned from you, John.
That won't get you hurt, it's for...
Okay, are we done?
Yeah, we're done. Rose?
That's your paper.
No, I don't, that's mine. I think it is. I got mine in.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's from the last fire department meeting, I bet it's yours.
Oh, yeah, that is mine.
Yeah.
I took that long, I didn't know if he'd have a new map for it, I got it out.
Okay, Rose, I got the seat, man.
I'd like to say what's on my red, well, that's Ruthie really wants me to have, so...
No, actually on ours, we anticipate the sale of two of our police vehicles this next coming year, so I was hoping to use some of the revenues to offset a new, the purchase of a new one. But basically all I had asked for was for half of the truck, which we had set half aside for last year. Purchase three new portable radios, one we purchased in 2008, it's only eight years old, so, you know, I think we can make the one work. A new radio for our patrol vehicle, the one in it's about 20 years old and it doesn't work just right anymore. And this next one I'm not... You use cell phone? What's that? What do you use? It'll pick up some of the times, it'll transmit, some of the times it's nothing but static. So use your walkie-talkie. Then the 2013, the vehicle we have has a light bar on it, well, they had to drill a hole in the roof to run the wiring up through it, and Scott's gonna keep it and we're gonna have this vehicle's long term. I'd like to actually have it fixed properly, welded and kind of painted a little bit, just for the longevity purpose of it. And then our in-car camera in the 2013 no longer functions and it's out of warranty, so I was hoping to just get a new one of those. We could apply for a grant, but we've already applied for that grant and used it towards the purchase of other things.
As far as vehicles go, so they have those two Dodges and...
Actually, point of order, the Rams, they're not Dodgers anymore after the vice, they went through bankruptcy, they spun the trucks off as Rams.
Point taken.
Thank you.
So, so we have these two Rams. Anyway, the idea that we've been floating around is that we'd take the Ram that's to be retired, it's 2013, right? And get that changed over to be the administrative vehicle. We have that Ford Explorer and we have a Charger.
Both of which need thrown away.
And, you know, it's just the idea is they, those are, will say, really come to the end of their life, and if we can have an administrative vehicle, we keep this other pickup around, get that changed over and use that as the administrative vehicle. But we would keep it outfitted for police, as in still has lights and radio.
Yes. But we'd have to, we'll have different lights and we're not gonna have a light bar on top of it anymore.
They do periodically need a third vehicle and that, it comes in handy.
And Ruth really wants me to have this stuff.
Verified.
The Sid card camera, or is that a, how old is that camera? It was bought in 2014, so it's four years old. And we've already put more, bought other parts for it and it hasn't worked right since we've had it. And the other one works perfectly. Same camera, same everything. Say 2014, that's only two years old. Yeah. With a one-year warranty on it.
Is the camera more of a priority because that keeps us in or out of trouble?
Well, yes, and actually it's something that, when we have our vehicle outfitted, they'd install for us, so I'd like to have it for them, but we do have body cameras, by the way, too. But yeah, an in-car camera is a necessity.
It makes the lawyers happy, doesn't it?
Yes, and protects from liability, too. It's funny how people, it's obscured, it's what happens out there.
They just have different recollections.
That all?
That...
That's good. Bill?
That WAPA, you want that now or later?
Yeah, now's good.
Updating the council on that WAPA contract, protection C. It is, just when we were talking about it. Mean has agreed to the 1.1% losses, so that is done. And the only other thing that was up was the, putting a number to the transmission losses at 2.64%. I called WAPA and haven't heard nothing back. And this contract states, return both original exhibits to the above adders within 75 days of the date stamped above this, or this exhibit shall be null and void. 75 days was last Monday. So, sit back and hear what WAPA says. I called Mean and Mean said a lot of towns didn't sign it, so. And they sent it to every one of us in this basin. So I guess I'll wait to see what, see what we hear, but they provide losses up to 7% and by stating that the losses of 2.64%, it's irrelevant. the losses of two point six four percent, it's irrelevant to our cost, so it doesn't mean nothing. I, I, I told WAPA, I'd just like to leave it the way it is, at seven percent, but they're adding that one sentence. I said, well, you have to change it every year. So. So your cost will remain the same, so. Just wait to hear from WAPA. And more likely you guys probably will be, so. Do you wanna start on page twenty-four, Scott?
Yep. Unless you had anything on twenty-two or twenty-three? Okay.
Everything's checked off the way it always is.
I got a question, Bill. Didn't, I thought we had budgeted to replace that ten ton, or the, the red toner.
Right, that's for this year.
Okay.
Right. I'm actually doing the bidding right now.
Okay.
You wanna go through that here real quick, though, Bill, what we were talking about today and just prices coming a little high.
You're looking at, um, uh, right now we have an F three fifty and it drags that bumper to the ground with the vac on it and, uh, the trailers and such. And Jeff and, uh, Cameron would like to bid an F five fifty. It's a heavier chassis and it's also dual wheels on the back, so it's made for full trailers. And, um, basically XL, which is the bottom line of the four, you're, you're talking at around forty-five thousand just for that pickup. The cab and chassis. The fiberglass body, we paid, I think it was ten-eight, uh, ten years ago. So I'm looking at that being around twelve, fourteen probably. Haven't got any bids on it yet. So we budgeted forty-five thousand. Well, that's just gonna cover the cost of the cab and the chassis. But that's, you see how high prices have gone up.
Such, quite that.
On the, the priority, on the, we buried a lot of, reburied a lot of lines in town, replacing primary. Well, if you guys knows, we, we barely, rarely are ever out of power. And we need to keep doing that because there's a lot yet to do yet. That's actually number four, but.
So do you do that? No? Or you contract that out?
We, we, that's one we bid out. Sean Construction's been doing quite a bit of it.
What's what it take for you, if you had to do it? Could you do it?
You, Sean brings down six guys and sometimes he has twelve.
Part of it, you're bored, aren't you?
Almost all of it, Jerry. You just can't, you can't dig anymore.
We don't have a board, Sean.
But to give you guys an idea, Leroy brings down minimum six guys. And then, um, his last year's job was a lot more time between than what anybody thought. There was a week, so he brings down six more guys. So you, you have a lot of manpower there.
How was a typical project like that take?
Was that lasting two months, guy? It was, it was quite a while.
Oh, they were. I don't know if it's quite two months, but they were here a long time. They encountered lots of trouble when they.
They had one, one job, why they, they brought it, they had a, he, he was lining up with their jobs. They brought twelve guys and two crews in and they finished it in two weeks. But you know what we normally do? We, we pretty much stay at the same footage as every time we bid.
How much can you get done for eighty thousand?
Jerry, the three-phase line, you're probably looking at forty-five thousand a mile.
Wow.
For one mile. A single phase, you're, you're up in the, probably the twenty-five thousand range. But you gotta realize, too, if you, if you got only bid two miles, you're gonna pay a lot more than that forty-five.
That's why with one hundred and eighty thousand, this is gonna get you hurt.
And that's when, uh, we did the FEMA project. That's what the engineer's estimate was per mile for three phases, single phases.
Wow.
So if you can, if you can do your, in bulk, you save a lot of money. The FEMA job came in at, in on at fifty cents to the dollar.
About half price.
Because we did so much, you know, so you really, that's how I do my underground. You don't wanna do a little bit. You wanna save up and do a big chunk, cause you're getting
Getting a better rate.
Mobilization's expensive.
Getting a better rate all the way around.
It's everything. And the contractor's gonna go after those big jobs. You can't blame them. They gotta get your guys busy. Um, but you can see that, like, number one coincides with number three. Number one is, that's just for the engineering to go out, dynamize the per-unit costs, the engineering work, ready to go out for bid. Is what that would cover. I called up DGR and I said, what would that, I asked him for an estimate. That's what he, he gave me, thirty thousand.
You get a better rate getting a bid in the wintertime, then?
Yeah, a hundred percent.
That's what I thought.
I love bidding in January.
Really, this is actually gonna be, probably two thousand eighteen.
Yep. You're looking.
Cause I understand by the time that budget comes around, it's too late.
Yep. That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at, yeah.
And there, there is some money in the current budget, though.
Right.
For some type of a project, though.
The little projects, yeah.
Yeah, first of all, and eighty thousand, Terry, this is gonna help a whole lot.
What we've done before, like, say, if we were at eighty thousand on underground, that, that was the contracted price for the, uh, for the contractor. And we, we supplied all the, all the materials, which was in addition to that eighty thousand.
We use, we use our inventory, but on the line I budgeted for buying the material.
Okay.
But we've buried lines. I've got lines that's been buried for, for thirty years now and never had a problem.
But you're still gonna be looking at a, at a two thousand eighteen project, probably.
If you, if you guys start, like, I suppose your next budget year is in July. Seventeen, eighteen, you probably looked at that next January, two thousand.
Right, to make bids.
Eighteen, no, you said two thousand eighteen, right, to, to receive bids. And also it gives your engineer time to line up his jobs.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that's how far out you're looking, huh? And the poles are really, I mean, they're getting bad, some of them poles. We spent ninety-five percent of our time in town this year. So we're not getting out in the country very often. That's what we're gonna be doing this week here when it warms up. Tree trimming and maintenance like that. Yeah, you're looking, and the more, the farther out you plan, the better it is.
Yeah.
You're gonna get the better bids. You're gonna get, engineers gonna like it more.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
So do you think you'll have to replace some of these poles before we get into to big bid? I mean, I guess.
I can almost guarantee you. We've had, well, we've had a fall over already. Just from wind. And we had a pole got hit, hit by a tractor south of town and I went and checked the next pole south and it had rot on the bottom, so. We're lucky the pole we hit was a, it was a new FEMA pole, a new solid pole.
That FEMA deal was a blessing.
Oh, you betcha. Can't beat it.
I hope so, as I was.
You're better, you're better off being lucky than dead. And we got a good system. And that allowed us to concentrate all of our time re-burying this primary that was going bad, so.
But you still have to maintain it.
Oh, yeah. We, we're out typing hardware all the time.
Right.
So if you had to replace a few poles, do you do that, if you had to?
That's what we've been doing.
Yeah, but if you find a couple of bad ones, you, to get us to our next point.
I betcha, yeah.
Okay.
But that, that's what Jerry said there. You're looking at two thousand, January two eight, two thousand eighteen, before you can go out for a bid. But this, this is, the study realizes is the bid packet ready to go off for bids. Then the council, when you do that, you're gonna know exactly what you, you're gonna do and accept or reject all bids, too, if you want, you know? Always have that right. But just for, for planning purposes, I think that's a, another thing is our, our rates for, through the year two thousand fifteen, we've got pretty good rates. You know, stable rates. It's where you're not gonna look at, you know, high cost and wholesale power increases. So that's another way to, the timing's good, plus, like I said, we God, I hate to say this, you can't stop re-burrying this wire, cause there's a lot to re-bury yet, you know, in town. We gotta keep re-burrying wire. Cause coming out of the sub, the wire was nineteen seventy-seven, so. There's a lot of older wire out there. And it helps laying and drowel. Wire likes dry ground. I can like soybeans. They don't like repeat one.
Kind of like, uh, well, do, already see, when they first started burying, they was burying five miles a year. And they hardly got the second five miles buried and they had trouble with the first.
You betcha, yeah.
Because I don't know what they.
We had the same problem here. We, we buried out the ball course and that wire all went bad. The new wire is so much better than the old wire. It's evolution, you know, it's just the way it's gonna be.
Hello, her.
That pretty much stakes the system.
Can you, can you talk about your trencher real quick, though, Bill? And, yeah, are you looking at budgeting that for next year, or is this in year two or three, or what are you thinking?
What I would recommend, Scott, is just, I meant number one. And then sticking with the replacing the underground. We use the mini excavator a lot on, I'm telling you, you can't get anywhere anymore. The new house on North State Road, we brought the Mini X back there to dig in the service. So I would, of everything on there, number one should be a priority. And then you know, that, and also maintaining and replacing underground in the town. But like John asked me about our, our faults are all fixed. You know, everything we know about that went bad is all fixed, so. The last line we had that was broke was from the Laney's, uh, shop back here across the hills, um, I didn't wanna do it, cause I didn't wanna bust Main Street the first. I didn't wanna be the first one to bust Main Street.
Ah, yeah.
So we put that off for two years. And we went through there and never hit nothing, so. All faults are fixed, so.
Thanks, Bill.
Which is very nice.
Yep. Lon.
He don't need none of them.
I'll bet he does.
I'm just gonna elaborate on, like Bill said, that Mini X was a good investment, because every, every time we dig anymore, that's what we're using. And, uh, but if you're looking on page twenty-five, we've put one heck of a lot of hours on the back, so I was kinda surprised at that. Um, actually a hundred hours more than normal, I believe it was, pretty close to that. A lot of it had to do with pumping, um, in the spring, that tractor, you know, was running twenty-four hours a day. But, uh, other than that, I mean, my equipment's in pretty good shape. If you go to page twenty-six, everything's looking good there, except for well three. At some point, you're gonna have to address that well. Uh, we know we got a hole in the casing and it pumps a lot of air. We only use it about one month out of the year. And the only reason I do that is cause it pumps so much air into the system. Um, DNR would like us to use it at least once a month, a week a month. And we don't, just because. So that's something maybe, you know, down the road, I'm not asking for anything on that, because it, it still is working.
Just so that everybody understands on the council, I mean, that is our, our only backup well. We have that one down on the bike trail. We run that one all the time. And then this one's in Speaker Park. That's the only backup we have.
Did it cost to fix it?
No. He probably thought we'd have to pull the casing, put a new casing in it. So you're looking at hundreds of thousands.
How big?
I believe that's a ten inch, I believe it is.
They can't put a one inside it?
Uh, well, we're redoing all the pumps and everything, you know, you know? Cause they're kinda specific how they screw down in there to seal that all, so. But, uh, and guys, I mean, we can make this last a long time unless the DNR comes in and tells us, you gotta run it every, all the time. They've been suggesting that. I'm gonna say they're suggesting. So with that being said, uh, lift stations are doing real well, um, on, on, uh, number thirteen, the one we had so many problems with. We, uh, sat down, sent out a couple of letters. We sent them out two different times and that, we have not had a problem since. So, that might have cured our problem. We're not sure about that. But, uh, as, as of now, it's been about a month and a half we haven't had to pull that pump. So that maybe was the ticket. Moving on to the next page quick. Number one would be Ruthie's and Scott's, probably not mine.
Look, with that.
That new building.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't put that down.
Go through the rest of your stuff, but I want the, and we'll come back and discuss that building.
Uh, the trailer for the Mini X, uh, to drive the Mini X down to the log cabin area takes a half an hour. And, uh, I mean, I just, I did that on purpose, just to see how long it'd take. Takes a long time. That's from our shop. Well, I'd like to have a dedicated trailer for that so that we can keep it loaded on there. Then we'd have both buckets on there instead of just one bucket. And, uh, then we can just hook up to it and go. It'd be a lot quicker and everything's there.
Would you use a, a, a trailer for something else, though, too, if you?
I would, I would prefer to leave the Mini X sit on it. And then we just hook it up.
You got one for the skid loader anyway?
No.
Oh.
No, we drive the skid loader almost everywhere. I mean, you can drive the skid loader out around the lake in twenty minutes. They go a lot faster. All this new one doesn't go as fast as the old one, but it, a lot of times we just drive the skid loader. We never load it up. Replacing the skid loader would be something that was in that contract when we purchased the last one. In my opinion, that's money well spent, because, well, every three hundred hours, we buy a set of tires. And, uh, and they're shot at three hundred hours. And, uh, I'm guessing right at about fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred dollars for a set of tires on this new one, so. If you pencil it out over the years, I think it's actually a pretty good deal from what we, it cost us to trade last time, so. But, and that's entirely up to you guys, how you wanna do that, uh.
That, that number is, that is the, the trade-in number, the six thousand dollars, that was the amount.
Mm-hmm. Now, you don't have to. You're not obligated to do that, guys.
Yeah.
Just, we just have it down here so that, you know, it could be budgeted in. Plasma cutter, something for the shop down there. Um, I don't know if you're all familiar with plasma cutter. It's basically throwing electrons out with air, compressed air, rather than using oxygen and settling. Very handy tool. The city's rented mine several, several times. And, uh, eighteen hundred bucks, you know, it's not a lot of money, but, uh, it'd be a piece of equipment that we could use quite often.
Does it cost us a lot of rent, that one?
I think, I don't know what we were charging you. I mean, you could look at that, but it, I mean, you had it the whole time you did the, all, it was there all last winter, so I don't really think we charged you just too much.
So what the hell deal with the white byway, right?
Yeah, we, we like a bargain.
The backhoe is something I put down. It's way, way down on my priority list. Um, I, the only reason I put it down is because of the age and it, it's up to you guys whether you wanna start, you know, whether you wanna keep your equipment up. You know, um, my backhoe's a nineteen eighty-four and I use it all the time, you know, so. It'll last a long time and we've kept it up.
Not like for the snow and stuff like we used to.
No, right. But we still put three hundred thirty-seven hours on it last year, which is probably almost the most hours we've ever put on. And, uh,
You don't have anything.
Way down on my priority list.
I see you don't have anything on here for a dump truck.
Well, Scott, I talked about that and, and what we, what I'd like you, to see you do is maybe start, maybe just putting a little money away each year for it. I think I can get four or five more years out of that old green. That's a ninety-seven, I believe. But what's happening is the bucks, the box on the backhoe's starting to rust out and it was the same type of box that fell off the other one. So if, but I think we can get four or five years out of it, you know, and, and put a little money away each year for that. And then we have the money to purchase a new one, you know?
Didn't we talk about that last year, is putting money away?
I know we've talked about that. I don't know that, uh, we didn't do anything as far as, as starting any specific set aside fund, but yeah, we'll, I'll include that on there and we'll see what we come up with, uh, about being able to fund a little set aside.
Do, do you wanna go back to the building, Scott, and visit a little bit on that?
Run through the rest of your stuff here, quick.
Okay, all right. Of course, you got your street project coming up. That's, that's already been taken care of. And, um, this curb and gutter, it should be priority two, I believe. If you go down by Sue Mines, you know, we had some complaints down in there. Um, uh, going down towards the past parkies there, there's always a washout there. I mean, we're putting rock in that thing all the time. Four or five days later, you got a hole there again and we get. Four or five days later, you got a hole there again and we get complaints, you know, so. I'd like to put some curb and gutter along there. Now, depending on how far the money would go, we can, we can kind of decide that, how far that curb and gutter should go up. Personally, if you, if you took it up to where the water tower starts, would be the best. But it doesn't have to go up that far.
The water tower driveway?
The water tower driveway, yes. It doesn't have to go that far though. The, the big washout is down the hill for it, so.
There's a big hole there now.
All the time, all the time, Terry, I mean, it's just a constant battle.
I'd go through there with a bus all the time.
Harrison Street is down by Sue Mines. And then the two blocks on Main Street are also down by Sue Mine, would be in front of Roberts's, that first block down there between Harrison and, and. Well, a few blocks south of Main Street coming from the very south from Harrison Street's north. Lake Shore Drive, that's something that you guys were kind of looking at last year, I think, and of course it kind of got put back, but. I'm thinking, this is a guess now, guys, I'm thinking around $80,000 is what you're looking at to start from, from where we left off at the mayor's when we put the new storm sewer in there a couple of years ago for shavers. And, and then going to the south, all the way around the corner to, is it Mrs. Hanson? I believe it's Hanson that lives in that area.
Olson, Olson. Out to Lake Street, clearly.
Out to Lake Street, yes.
And you know, I've talked with Lon about that, about having Lon design a project there for us. What we'd do is, is get a bid spec ready to go and, and just bid that to local contractors. But we need to have Lon get that, get a bid spec ready.
I'm a little concerned about that, doing that, just because there's, it's pretty detailed. It's, it's as complicated as an alley as what you had out there that we did last summer. It's a very complicated alley for elevations and stuff like that. You know, I don't know how you want to write it up, you know? Water has to run to the drain, you know, that's probably the way to write it up.
That'd be a good start.
And then, of course, you got the intersection out there at M54, we're trying to work with the county, get a little involvement out of them, maybe we can help, have them help us pay for some of that. And that really is out by Mrs. Clausen's, the old bait shop, that intersection right in there. We measured that up, well, last summer sometime, we, and, and gave it to my.
Yeah, John took it to the county.
I took it to the county supervisor.
Yeah.
The engineer supposedly came down and looked at it, tried to get fixed.
We haven't heard nothing since, I don't know about that, yeah.
Bad corner there too on M54, Evaco's corner, where the trucks always take that corner and drop off. The trucks drop off, there's, while the bus drops off too, you know, it's pretty tough.
Off of the highway?
When you're, yeah, when you turn and see.
Going to the west or east?
Going to the north.
Oh, go north.
You know, I know that's county, but.
Oh, okay, okay.
That engineer.
Okay.
But it does, it keeps, they got it filled up with cement rock right now, you know.
I'm going to follow where you got it.
Get to Evaco, where the sign is down there on the end, right on the end where you turn off of 175 to the north. It's always had trouble keeping some gravel in there.
Before you get too much into water, Lon, can you talk a little bit about the water tower and where we're at on the radio?
Well, I called Jetco today, he was supposed to be here last week, which I didn't care they didn't come because it's pretty cold out. But we have been running the tower over several times. It's, we don't have any way of knowing when the tower's full, guys. So we're just kind of timing and guessing when the tower's full. Well, we've run it over on purpose several times, but we've run it over because we forgot to turn it off. You know, you get to doing things, you forget to turn it off. But what we're going to do is replace the radios with this company, that Jetco does all of our, our computer work down there on our SCADA system. And we would like it, this John, what's his name?
Zeman.
Zeman. Called him up to get him to come and work on it. Alpha Wireless bought them out, John doesn't want to work on it, he said, well, you know, the system's 25 years old, guys, it's time to replace it, you know? And if you go down there, it's actually built in a cake pan. And hung on the wall with a piece of plywood. I mean, it's pretty, pretty archaic. But anyway, so what we're going to do is replace just what we need to replace right now, the part that isn't working. And then as radios start to fail, then we will replace well three and well four. Right now, we're just replacing the, the water tower and the system at the, at the plant. And that's going to be, it'll cost about $4,500 if I remember right. And, and then as, as needed, we'll have to replace that, it probably won't be in the budget for it. But I'm, you know, I'm hoping it's a four or $5,000 fix each time, so. Uh, the replacing of the water valves, we'll be doing that right away in the spring. And Fifth Street will not have to be replaced. I called Jack the other day and he actually replaced that, him and Jeff replaced that when I was gone, one time on vacation. So Seventh Street though, there's two valves up there we're going to replace, so we're still at, at that two valves. So then I've got the fire hydrants out at Provost and 30 Acres, they're leaking, but we're going to call a company to have them come up and look. Brown Supply out of Ford Dodge has, his boy fixes fire hydrants now. We're going to have him take a look because it'd be quite considerably cheaper to have him do it if he can. Of course, we're replacing the five more water valves. I'd really like to start down here by the post office. There's three of them right in that street right there that need to be taken care of because that would isolate some of our areas, especially down that way. You know, we have Turner Systems exercises our valves and I have the records at, in the office down there. And then he counts how many turns they, they go, so we know which valves we need to fix, so. And this is something we put on there every year, it just seems like it does never get done. Of course, we all know about the Lagoon Project, major, major deal.
The, just the, the little update on that is that our anti-degradation analysis has been approved. And yeah, it's just something that the engineer kind of did behind the scenes, but, but it ends up being one of the important approvals of the process. And this needed to happen before you could continue on with anything else. So that's, that's been approved and kind of on to the next step.
Sewer at 30 Acres, I've actually contacted Pete Howell, they haven't gotten back to me yet, they're trying to schedule us in. We tried to do that last year, we had no frost, we buried the truck out there and this year we should be able to get out there and take care of that, clean that sewer out. And then we'll have to televise it as soon as we get that done. And continue lift station upgrades and maintenance, it takes 20 grand a year just to, just to do it, just to, you know? Just to keep the pumps up. I mean, we've got one down at the sewer plant, right now it's $10,000. Well, we're just going to try and limp it along and hopefully can make it a year and a half, two years and go with it. New roof at the water plant, pretty bad shape, guys. It'll be leaking here pretty quick, but in the past, the city has done that, but now we're into the, this water plant deals a little bit different situation because we're going to have to take all the siding off and everything to tie it into the other roof. Only the, only the top roof, the higher roof needs to be replaced right now, but it wouldn't hurt to, means while we're doing it, let's just do the whole thing and then it's all updated.
Who does that, what city?
Well, the city did in the past, but if you're going to tear off.
So who do you get that?
Well, I say you put it out for bids and have a contractor do it. You know, do it with the decker shingles like we've done everything else, it's a 50-year shingle, we should never have to do it again.
That's what I was asking.
You know, we'll have a new plant there before you have to replace shingles. And them decker shingles, held up for a while so far, I mean, it's been a pretty good deal.
Very good, I wanted.
Unless you want to talk about building.
We want to talk about the building. And really, the only thing in the back about the building is, is that aerial photo. Here, this came out of, out of our planning session last year about the notion of having more storage down around the shops. And it started off thinking maybe we want to have some additional cold storage. And over time, this thing has, has kind of morphed as, as Lon and Bill have, have looked at that, kind of done some analysis about good areas and then really what their, what their wants and desires are. And that's why we have the, the aerial photo there. What this would propose is to say that the preferred location for ease of construction is actually there at those bins. And the bins, bins could be removed and then the, a new building could be built there. That building is proposed at about 70 by 120, which is bigger than the existing shop. Okay, with the idea being there that, that basically you'd build that one, the electric would end up in this new shop. Lon would have, would have the old shop have enough area for storage of their own equipment in each one of their shops. Both of the shops then being insulated and heated. You know, that's, that's taken a, taken a turn from where we started if we were looking at cold storage.
And that's where we were looking, if, if this, this quonset next to the old shop or the newest shop is, that's heated anyway. And what, you know, if you take, yeah, that's always been heated and, and so. Yeah, it's a hell of a lot of heat going out of there. And we think if you put a new shop up, I bet you can heat the new shop cheaper than you can just heat that one quonset. The reason we kind of picked that site, guys, is it, when we built the last shop, we hauled about four foot of dirt in there. And this site, there, there won't be a lot of dirt prep to do. And the fact that we can keep things in that quonset until the new building is built and then kind of have a transition, move the things over.
Who's bins?
The, yeah, so the bins are owned by Jim Stock and he has leased land from the city for decades. And he pays us a little bit then every month on, on this land rent. We have been under agreement with him on it, the agreement is, is actually expired, but we just continue to bill him every month for it. And he pays this same rental fee that he's paid for, like I say, decades about, about renting this little, little bit of land. I've talked with Jim. Yeah, it's something like 60 bucks a month.
But these bins too though, they're no problem. I mean, they used to have a little crane.
To move them out?
With a tire up in there, pull, lift them up and that's where we lifted our vans like that and into the farm.
Yeah, I, I will just relay my conversations with Jim and I've talked with him twice now. And he's just not at all excited about, about the city utilizing that space. And you know, he says that he uses those bins and would like to continue to use them and would prefer that the city look at another site.
It would be a big hardship on Jim Stock. He is a struggling business person, it would be a big hardship on Jim.
What would you do with the old quonset, the ones, would you eventually tear them down anyway?
That was the game plan, the, the one that we use is completely rusted out, I mean, you can walk in there anytime you want. No, we don't heat ours.
I was going to say.
No, no, that took 500 gallons a week when we used to heat that, when we used to heat that shed. It's filling up every week. It never got above 32 degrees.
Part of that global warming.
Chinese outside.
Outside.
Whole deal, you know, the whole deal there is that you're going to get rid of that eventually. So you say you got to haul in a bunch of dirt? How much would you have to haul in?
Well, four foot or, and by, well, it's got to be bigger than that footprint, it's going to, you know, you're going to have to have some back slope from it too and.
But this wouldn't be.
7,000 square feet, you're looking at more than seven, almost 8,000 square foot for a building, 8,400 I believe it is. So four foot, take.
But this building isn't as big, this spot wouldn't be as big as this.
No, this is 120, these quonsets are 90 foot long. And I mean, that's why we're actually adding an extra 20 foot to that building because time Bill gets all his stuff in there. I believe the insurance company wants the transformers in too, is that correct, Bill?
Yeah.
So it, it eats up the building pretty fast.
So this is, Bill's got his stuff in here?
Bill was in the first one and I'm in the, the second one here.
Wait, is it the same deal if you put it on this side over here?
Right here, down here.
Yeah. It would be the same.
You'll have to do some dirt work, not quite as much, I mean, just so we can get the water to run away from the building, but. I mean, this was just something we came up with just because it was the cheapest way to go, we thought.
Right.
We're not trying to push Jim out or anything, it was just, you asked us for ideas and.
Sure.
And add it up to this building out there.
It, you're probably going to need about six foot of dirt right down in here. And, and this building is designed to add on to. Yep. I believe it was anyway.
Does this give you much complications when filling and unloading bins?
A little bit, once in a while, it's, it is, not when you agree, Bill, for getting your trucks backed in and stuff and, well. Right there's the augers and stuff, there's, there's he's sitting, you know?
So, so what you're telling me on this building that's sitting there, that newest one, that was set up at one time to add on, is that kind of what you?
I think it was built, if I remember right, it was built to add on, but I'm not sure about that, I could do some checking on it. That was Wickson or Jefferson that put that up.
But it really wouldn't have to, you could have.
Well, I, I think what the deal is, is the rafter on the very end, whether that's strong or not. They might have to take that one out, put a different rafter in and move that one to the end, or they'd probably just get rid of it now, but. We're, this building's only 60 foot wide, we're proposing 70 foot because if you get Bill's trucks back to back, there is no room to walk around the backside of them. And he would like a place for storage of his electrical equipment, then they can just walk back behind, load the truck, which makes a lot of sense.
So you don't think they would be able to put a 70 foot wide building on here?
I'm wondering about the pitch of the roof.
Yeah.
Because then you start losing headspace as you, but you're going another 10 foot, but I'm, I'm thinking that was a, I think it was a 212 pitch or a 112 pitch, I'm not really sure. So you're only, if you go out 10 foot, you're losing a foot. Let's see, 30.
Is that something?
No, you're losing more than that. Take 30 inches, if I'm figuring in my head right, it'd be 30 inches. So then you're down to a, you know, less than a 14 foot wall on the backside, well then, if, if we're going to move the transformers in, I think Bill had talked about maybe getting some shelving like you guys use and we could put them transformers and stack them up. And that, to better utilize the space.
So you're saying that's 14 foot high?
The sidewalls right now are 16 foot.
Okay.
But if you add, well, if you add 10 foot and it's on a two, that'd be 20, 20 inches you'd lose if it's a 2% slope or a 212 slope. That's a rough figure and I'm, I'm not sure it's a 212 pitch.
So, so what, what kind of cost savings, you know, if you're attaching on to this other building, is there some savings on, on that with that wall or how's that work out?
I really don't think there'll be, it'll cost you more, I really think it'd cost you more.
Really?
I, I'm, I'm not sure about that, but I bet it would. Because then, then you're, especially if that rafter isn't made right to add on, then they have to redo that. Unless you leave that wall and they add, I, I don't know.
Is there somebody you could talk to that could...
Well, I could call that company up. I think they're still in Jefferson. Wicksaw or Jefferson, have them come up, take a look.
Just due diligence, just to see if that would...
If you go out a hundred twenty foot, is that gonna come into play with this other guy's building? Yeah, that's what I'm thinking there, Terry.
If you look at the white building in the lower left, okay, the property lines aren't, on the photograph, aren't necessarily right. You see the property line there, the blue property line runs right through the building. Okay? Now that's gonna be off a little bit on this, on this aerial photo, so...
See the shadow of that pole? That is northeast corner of his property line.
So that's why I'm thinking it won't go there. Do you guys see that telephone pole there, right here? Right there.
Yep.
The big thing that we thought with putting it over here is the fact that we could utilize the quonsets. You guys need to walk in there and just see how much is in there. I mean, it's standing room only. You ain't gonna get nothing else in them. I mean, we're stepping over stock.
You mean utilize the quonsets like?
Utilize them until we got, no, until we got the new building built and then you can remove the old quonsets and...
Just take them both out?
Well, I think that's the game plan anyway.
So with these are all cement underneath, though, you could use it to park machinery and stuff.
How long would a project like that take to, if you're...
I think they can build, you know, well, the last time they did it, I believe it took them about a month or a month and a half. They had to have it done by October, I believe it was, but they didn't get it done by then. In fact, the floor froze in one spot and they had to cut the floor back out and redo it.
So your concern is the stuff that's in there, sitting outside?
Well, you can't let it sit outside. You can't let Bill's stuff sit outside. I mean...
We had to bring in a reefer, rent a reefer and put them in reefers.
You could put it in this other building for a temporary time?
The new shop?
Yeah.
There's absolutely no room.
There's no room in there.
You'd have to have trucks sitting outside to do that. Every foot of that building's full. I just thought we're gonna tear the quonset down just temporarily, rent some reefers to put the inventory in the reefers so you can lock it up. Then when the new shop's built, you just put it in the shop, you move it twice, but if you don't want to bother Jim Stock, that's probably your second best option.
And the shed would go right in line with this?
Yeah, right.
But then stick...
Twenty foot further.
Seems to be like better than tearing this out, if you're sure.
Well, like I say, you're not messing with Jim Stock. These are just suggestions we're kicking around here, so...
So I've just tried that.
It seems like that. To me, you're getting rid of the quonsets too, you know, that's one good thing.
Well, I think either way, you want to get rid of the quonsets.
Yeah, okay. As you look at them quonsets, if you go seventy feet, that's basically entitled that footprint that's there with the quonsets. Because I believe those buildings were like thirty feet. And, and I'm wondering, is it gonna be an issue with the next quonset over to get stuff out of there? I haven't measured that.
I think you're talking about...
To the commercial, well, but there's one more building there. There's still a commercial quonset down there that isn't in the picture. Now, if we put the new building in there and we raise that dirt up there, are we gonna be able to raise that dirt up that high and get past that other quonset? Or are you gonna have to remove that quonset too?
What kind of shape that quonset is?
They're all, what, nineteen thirties, thirty-five?
And I don't know that it doesn't have holes in it and stuff, but...
They take seventy-five dollars each for them.
Oh, wow.
Seriously, they did.
I did appreciate it, darling.
I believe they probably are, but it's still needed, you know, as far as the community...
You know what it sounds to me like?
Water car.
It's a good time to clean it up. Get rid of it.
That, as you think about that north quonset, just know that it's faulty. You know, all of those water floats and everything gets stored in there and everything for water car. I mean, it is used.
It's totally packed. Could you rent, could we rent, rather than putting it in the reefers or whatever, even the quonsets, the carnival, could you rent Larry's building that he doesn't use? Larry Nelson's?
The one right down there?
The big building? No, well, that building or the one uptown? I don't think he's putting any grain in them. Maybe he does have them full, I don't know.
When I talk with him every year, he says he's gotta clean something out before we can use them for floats.
Okay, well, there you go, you know? But that big one down there is usually empty. He's got hay in there, don't he, or tractors and stuff?
Pretty much full of his stuff.
Yeah, there you go, see, so that's out.
Well, we don't need, certainly don't need any decision. We're not gonna make any decision tonight, but...
But you certainly have to decide, first of all, before you do anything, can we afford it and how are we gonna pay for it? Two hundred thousand's a lot of money.
I have some concerns about the funding that I'd like to address whenever you're ready.
Go ahead.
You know, if you need the maintenance shed, you know, certainly that's an issue. And I just have some concerns about the type of funding that I think's being proposed. I just have a few handouts here. I want to thank you for letting me talk. I know that I've been talking a lot lately, but, you know, I truly care about this community or I wouldn't care what you do. I have learned a lot about TIF. From when Scott first tried to give me a one-on-one on it. I've done a lot of research on it, so I just pulled off. There's so much information and the code is on there. There's so much information about TIF, but I have some concerns about the plan to use TIF financing for the, for the building. The projects that are in our urban renewal plan are legal under Iowa law, but as Scott has previously pointed out, the use of TIF funding for a city maintenance facility is not recommended by our state legislature. Do we want to come under that scrutiny and be the poster child for misuse of TIF funds? If you feel you need a maintenance shed, which is, you know, obviously an ongoing concern, I mean, you have to have facilities for your stuff, I just hope you'll opt for another form of funding. In the urban renewal plan, it is tied in with enhancing corridor highway one seventy-five. There are some funding grants for that through Iowa Living Roadways and Trees Forever as far as, I'm not exactly sure what the plan was for the beautifying the corridor, but TIF funding started in the fifties and sixties. It was for blighted areas, then it kind of moved into economic development and there is some use of it for rural to middle income housing. And, you know, it takes the money away from the school and the county and it brings it into the city. And then it's put into a separate fund and then when that loan is paid back, then that money, that increased taxation starts going to the school and the county again. You know, where we have it here is EBAFCO and we have it out at Boulders. Both of those facilities raise the tax levy, so the amount of taxes increased. The difference is what we get in here into TIF. And then it enables you to do projects. And perhaps, you know, the long run down, the school and that don't get the immediate result, but they do get it later on. So when that twenty-year plan is up, then the school gets higher taxes and so it's a good thing for them too. This project won't result in any of that. There will be no increase in tax valuation if you take all of your TIF money and put it into this building. The expansion of Lakeview Lumber to erect a new building, to put in a hardware, is actually an example of where we could have and should have used TIF funding in this community. You know, we could have offered them sidewalk, maybe sewer brought in. I mean, that's what, that's what TIF is for. It's to help the community grow through economic development and increase your business, increase your revenue, increase your taxes. And I, you know, I'm kind of disappointed that that wasn't offered to the lumberyard because I certainly think them making the financial commitment that they're making to this community is huge. And I hope that the decision to use TIF funds for this project is not an effective way to stop the other projects that are in the urban renewal plan because it kind of looks to me like that's what it's gonna do. The one thing I wanted to make a note was... We have notes here. You would hope that Lakeview would use the TIF funds for economic development that would either increase your tax revenue or it would bring people into your community to spend money or it would be a facility that the residents are going to be able to use. And this project accomplishes none of those things. To me, this is a normal expense that you would come up with doing business as a city and you should fund it through normal funding procedures. I just think this is really an inappropriate use of TIF funding and I think it'll be frowned upon by the state legislatures. And if you, if you don't have any other way to do this, then I wish you'd put it to a community vote. Let the community vote if that's how they want to spend their economic development dollars because it pretty much cuts off all the other projects. So, thank you for your time.
It don't have anything to do with the way it looks when you come over by that?
I don't, we're working on it.
But there is other funding available to do this building, right?
Not for this building? What we would look at is, is traditional city financing mechanisms, which would be either property taxes or the other one that would be available is the local option sales tax. And just running the analysis on kind of that money that's not earmarked for anything on sales tax, there's about a hundred thirteen thousand dollars that's not earmarked for anything right now. So we do have lots of other smaller projects that are earmarked to come out of sales tax, but there's this hundred thirteen thousand dollars that's not. And that can, could be, you know, all or part of that could be used for a project like this too.
At the end of the year, we're gonna have thirty thousand we put away.
Yeah, so we have, past couple of years, we've put ten thousand dollars a year into this, what we've called the public works building, but it's just a, into this maintenance facility. So it has twenty thousand right now, thirty thousand at the end of the fiscal year.
Anybody got ideas what this building would run or no? Couple of options, you know, what we talked about?
High price is sixty by ninety. Was sixty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand, plus twenty-five thousand to put it up and that was no concrete?
No concrete.
Yeah. Concrete.
So could it, could be a chance that if you could talk to the people over in Jefferson just to see what, if that's a feasible thing to add on to there? You know, I have no idea, I'm just, but it'd be an idea to...
But, well, I don't think we can keep in the property lines adding on to that building.
I think all three quonsets, though?
Well, no, you could, but then you're not adding on to the building, like you can't go on the west side of the building. See, then we're gonna hit that property line of them.
I see. But the quonsets are still gonna have to come out, so that's expense too.
Biggest thing is hauling in dirt, is that correct?
That's the biggest difference between the sites.
You guys asked us to draw up, that doesn't include that building. Basically, you're putting an eighty-four hundred square foot building up and taking out nine thousand square feet, you know? It ain't gonna work.
Why didn't we offer any assistance to the lumberyard? Could we have done that?
Just a couple of answers. You know, the, that we, the only thing that's available for anybody who makes an improvement is the tax abatement. Okay, so that, that is available for any type of improvement. If, in order to spend TIF money, it needs to be within our urban renewal area. And that area, the private property area's not within the urban renewal area. So if you wanted to look at something, you know, again, maybe it could have been sidewalks or something on public land, but that would have been about it.
Can't that area be moved? Can't it be rezoned?
Rezoned, yeah, it can. It just, it's an amendment process of working through the urban renewal amendment. Took a month last time.
To rezone?
Just to put it in the TIF zone.
Okay. Maybe it should have been in the TIF zone.
Yeah.
That's what we did here.
Yep, well, we've, yeah, we've done, we've amended it four times.
Yeah.
Also, know that we paid the legal bill on that last time. It was thirty-six hundred dollars for the amendment process.
How can the lumberyard not be in the TIF zone, but the new building is, when the building's behind it?
We added that, that specific property was added during this last amendment. It, you know, if you look at the map, the map, it probably looks like a hard project of properties.
Where are the TIF zones?
The original one is EBAFCO. And then think of Blackhawk Marine and around to the hotel.
Yeah.
Okay? That was added on an amendment. A bunch of street right of ways and parks lands was added on amendments. And that was done when we, when we did the streetscape. Okay? So there's a lot of some street right of ways that were added. And then this last amendment added the shop property and the city hall property.
So at that time, we could have added the lumberyard?
True.
I mean, it could have added that.
And it's property, yeah.
We could have added that business section, and I don't mean just the lumberyard, but that, you know, there's businesses that run that whole block and half.
It, yeah. Anything within that urban renewal area is gonna be within that TIF area and it starts to affect how property taxes are, are received from the area. It would all come in as TIF revenue. You don't necessarily want any more in your, in an urban renewal area than what, what you would utilize as, as real, true tax abatement projects or, excuse me, TIF projects.
Is the streetscape part, part TIF?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Well, and it didn't go to the streets behind Main Street?
No. No, again, it's, and it's just the right of ways. It's not the private lands.
Any idea how we find out the last building?
The shop down there? I do not know, Jerry.
Maybe we'll find out.
Well, I thought maybe you knew.
I don't remember how we found out.
I really don't. I think it was electric, Jerry. The electric budgeted it.
Well, and there you go.
We saved for many years, you know, to get that.
Well, how about doing that again?
I mean, you already have, you already have a hundred thousand to start with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It wouldn't take you that long to save it.
You have a hundred and thirty, thirty.
Well, yeah, thirty percent.
Hundred forty-three.
Pardon me? We don't need to borrow money.
No.
I think the last one was a hundred fifteen thousand, though.
Just over a hundred thousand. How big is that?
Six thousand.
Thought that was way big.
Well, we know it wasn't one way or the other, but there was...
Machine ships are never big enough.
So you're looking at what, two hundred thousand? You have a hundred and forty-three?
Probably.
Yep.
Maybe there's a grant.
That'd be a pretty tough one for municipal operations.
I think we need to get more numbers.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll have Lon, we'll have Lon. Continue to work on some of that stuff.
Add it on or whatever.
Yeah. So we know, you know...
I think bumping Jim's grain bins out of there is gonna detriment on knocking another business out of Lakeview. So I think you need to really consider that.
Let's get some numbers and see where we could go from there. Like I said, I'm gonna... We'll have the city administrator report quickly.
Yeah. Take a look at that budget timeline, though, in your package, please.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three A.
Yeah, thirty-three A. That means I misnumbered when I was going through the first time. So here's a proposed timeline to work through for budget preparation. Um, and you see that, that today we are doing all the inventory needs assessment? We'll have a draft of a capital improvements plan to start to discuss at the next council meeting. Okay, and then we'll, we'll kinda start, uh, putting some of the numbers to it and, and where any of the funds could come from to, to look at supporting everything in the capital improvements plan. Uh, for the past several years, we've done this, this council goal-setting session. And, uh, this had proposed that at Jan-, at January ninth. If we look at moving that to maybe the twenty-third, what's that do for folks?
January twenty-third? How do we know that?
Pardon me?
How do we know that? What it does, I mean, really?
It's, it's another Monday, you know?
It's another Monday.
Well, my Mondays are usually free.
That's.
Why, why are we moving it farther back?
It wor-, it works well for Jerry, Jerry's gonna miss it otherwise.
Okay, I understand.
And, and we'll talk dates for, uh, for union, that's one of the dates, too.
Yeah.
Move it to twenty-third?
No problem.
Yep, if we, uh, if we can, I think that would be great, I do think we need to, we need to have a goal-setting session again. And see what we can do about getting on the same page, cause man, it seems like we're not on the same page a lot of times, and at least, you know, talk that through and see where we're at, so.
Do we get much out of that?
Yes.
It, we've got, we've got some, some new priorities come out of it, and it's, it's always good to get together and, and just have a chance to discuss, yeah. That's how the, yeah, and all the concrete pads and stuff came out of it that way.
That all came up.
So, um, on the sixteenth of January, we would have all the boards come, come present their budget requests. And then on the twenty-third, we would have that planning session. Have a special, um, city council meeting on the thirtieth, then to review a draft of the budget, everything will be put together by then, uh, to see how things look as far as the big picture. And, uh, review that again on February sixth, then if everything looks fine, we'd go ahead and set public hearing date, and it needs to be approved by March fifteenth. This timeline's pretty consistent with what we've done in the past. The other thing that it does for me personally is after that February sixth meeting, I would look to take a, a week's vacation involving that, so it helps out on the, uh, timing, I think it can, it can work out pretty well. We can move that to the twenty-third, we'll plan on that.
Yep.
Okay, right there.
Um, and the only other thing that I had is the, uh, city employees will get together for our little Christmas party this Thursday, so it'll be Thursday, it'll be at ten o'clock, and Ruth and Nancy and Kay and I and the mayor, we, we bring in some food and we just have the, the employees come up and, uh, it's the closest thing to a Christmas party we have. But I encourage the mayor and council to, uh, to come, if you're, if you're available around ten o'clock, stop down.
That's on this Thursday?
It's Thursday, yeah.
I'll be here, cause I gotta bring it.
Yeah, you do. That's all that I had.
Okay, we need a motion to go into closed session.
So we're.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Boltman?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Priest? Us, thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
I might have missed it, did you move that meeting to the month of January third?
Twenty-third.
No, the third.
Oh, the next city council meeting, can we move that to the Tuesday, the third?
Oh, yes, yes, right.
Yes, you didn't say that, did you?
Nah, we didn't, but yeah.
For sure.
We didn't know.